I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zarzaki, can you please call roll?
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Ms. Chick?
Here.
Zarzaki present. Mr. Kuzno?
Here.
Mr. Quinto is absent with notice. Ms. Infante?
Here.
And Mr. Dreyer is also absent with notice.
Thank you. I make a motion we adopt the agenda.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Ayes have it. Call to the public. Anyone wish to address the Planning Commission tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Should be no clarifications in that case. No correspondence that I'm aware of, Ms. Bird? No. We do have a public hearing tonight. Before we do the public hearing, I'll briefly go over how it goes. I will call the opening of the public hearing by voice vote. We'll call on the applicant to present a statement regarding their request. We'll call on the planner to present a short summary. We'll call on the public to any of those that support or oppose the request. And the commission may call on the applicant for any clarification. And we will close the hearing on a voice vote. And typically, if there are any comments, three-minute time limit. So in that case, I make a motion, we open public hearing for case JPC 190002. Recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Ms. Bukhari Magi Group, 43 Margaret Street, Whitmore Lake, for conditional use to develop the existing structure on the parcel as a duplex. Duplexes are permitted as a conditional land use in the SR2 District, Article 9, Section 36-247-1 of the zoning ordinance. The parcel is B-02-05-328-006 and zone SR2 Single Family Residential District.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Chick. Any other questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Ayes have it. So Ms. Bukhari, if you'd like to step up to the podium and turn the mic on and give us a brief overview, nope.
Yeah, hi. My name is Jabeen Bukhari.
And can you give us a description of what you're requesting tonight?
So at the moment, the house, it is in SR2, as you said, and it is already divided into two. It's already divided into two, which was not legally done by the previous owner. So I'm actually applying for, to give permission from you guys to divide it into two and a duplex. So there will be no footprint change, nothing, just the updating of the property. Already eighty percent of work has been done, you know, to divide it, just to update the property and have the legal permission from you.
Okay, thank you. You can have a seat.
Okay.
We'll go to the planning consultant, Mr. Lippens.
Yes, good evening. Case is pretty straightforward. The house is, the applicant's looking to convert the house to a duplex and improve it so that it can be rented. It is in the SR2 District and special land use and site plan review is required. The applicant did receive a variance from lot width and lot area standards to permit this development. You do have the variance letter from the zoning administrator in the packet, and it's noted in our letters that those variances were required. We also noted that the existing building doesn't comply with setback backs, but we find this to be an existing nonconformity that's not worsened by the application. But we do note that should any additions be put on in the future, that they would have to comply with setback back requirements. We are supporting, the special land use is reviewed for harmony in accordance with the goals and objectives of the zoning ordinance, constructed to be harmonious and in context with the surrounding vicinity, compatible with the natural environment and existing of future uses of the vicinity, compatible with township land use development plan, adequately served by essential public services, not hazardous or disturbing to future neighboring uses, that it will not create excessive requirements for public facilities. And we've been able to make positive findings in all of those categories. We did note that the site plan review is required and, you know, recommend site plan application approval be a condition of the, a conditional use approval or recommendation to approve to the township board. With regards to the site plan, we found that the existing landscaping on the site really substantively met the landscaping requirements. And there is a letter from the engineer that says they didn't think the property would necessitate a land, or engineering review. Fire chief has said that they, approval is subject to field inspection, but had no objectives, objections based on their review of the plan. The one thing that we, we would like to see a note added to the plan about drainage, just stating that the gutters and driveway drainage will not be directed toward neighboring properties or the public right of way. I think that note will protect the township, you know, should any water drain where it's not supposed to. And we've suggested that because there's not significant amount of changes proposed that would warrant an engineering review. So I think that this would, this note would cover us. I did mention that the variances were already obtained. And then the final issue is relating to the parking. There is a parking requirement and there's room to park the requirements. The gravel spaces on the plan proposed are ten by eighteen. I think there's room to make them ten by twenty. And then they are required to be paved for this use. So we'd be looking for you to have those spaces paved as part of the process. And we did provide an explanation. There is one district that does permit gravel parking. We've talked about this a lot at Planning Commission. But obviously, this site isn't in that district. And it would not be eligible for a variance really, because it would be a self-imposed hardship. Of course, there's always the right of an applicant to apply for a variance, but I don't think this is a good case for a variance. So we are recommending approval of the site plan, approval of the conditional use with the note that these parking must be provided, the spaces must be 200 feet, and the spaces must be concrete or asphalt.
Thank you. With that, I will call upon the public, anyone that supports or opposes. Apparently, there's nobody. And so I make a motion to close the public hearing. Supported by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Ayes have it. Move on to 9A, reports committees, board, trustee report, Ms. Chick.
The board met December 10th. The board received an update on two proposals for North Village. No action was taken. We are still awaiting additional information. The North Village Subcommittee was directed to meet and review the proposals and scoring and offer a recommendation on how to move forward. The committee met 12/17. Mr. Lippens will give an update. The board also approved the 2020 board meeting and township holiday schedule. The board approved the conditional use for National Fiber Construction Company at 6785 Whitmore Lake Road. A resolution was also presented to establish a Horseshoe Lake Wetland Preserve. After much discussion about how to assure the Horseshoe Lake residents that it would be preserved into perpetuity, its natural, in its natural state with no amenities for public access, the resolution did not pass. Further discussion is needed to find a mechanism to do that, perhaps deed restrictions, and we needed a legal opinion. An ordinance to amend, chapter 23 Marijuana Facilities, Section 23-6 regarding application requirements for and issuance of a township permit. For our attorney, this attorney, this amendment was recommended to give extra teeth to the process. The amendment was approved by the board. The board also approved the revised procedures and permit application for marijuana business permits. The procedures and applications are available online at the township website. Applications will be received between December 26th and January 26th, I think it's the 24th. Completed applications will be selected for application order for processing by a random drawing held publicly on January 28 at 6:00 PM at the Public Safety Building prior to regular scheduled board meeting that same day. That's all I have.
Thank you. ZBA report, Mr. Kuzno.
Nothing to report, because we didn't meet since our last meeting.
Thank you. Anything from staff, Ms. Bird?
Nothing, thank you.
None. Planning consultant report, Mr. Lippens.
I would just add to the report given by trustee Chick about the medical marijuana procedures, that I am taking questions via email during the application window. And I'm compiling those questions into a frequently asked question document that will be posted on the website. Our intent is to provide the answers to these questions to everyone who might have those questions. So rather than talking to people individually, we're collecting questions and then we'll be posting responses. My, you know, as soon as we have kind of a collection worthy of posting and have the time to vet those answers, we'll be posting them. I anticipate it will happen early January, but then questions, then we'll update it So we are, you know, hoping to provide that resource as soon as possible for people interested in applying to the township.
Thank you. In absence of Mr. Equinor, there's no Parks and Recs report, so we'll go to downtown planning group, Ms. Infante.
Due to the holiday schedule, they're meeting right now, so I'll update you when I get their minutes.
Okay, thank you. There's no unfinished business. Go to item 11. We'll combine A and B together, and that is to recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny both the conditional use for the duplex, which was part of the public hearing, and the site plan approval, same, recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny of the same. So with that, I will go to Mr. Lippens, although he covered pretty extensively in the public hearing. Is there anything else you have, Mr. Lippens, regarding details on the, on your reports?
No, just that I think if, if Planning Commission were to entertain a motion to approve the site plan, I think we could handle it administratively, if you wanted to add that to the motion. I think we could ask the applicant tonight if they're, if they have any objections to the paving of that space. I think that's really the only outstanding item. There's the one note that we'd like to see added to the site plan. But I think that those are relatively easy changes to make to the plan, if the applicant's willing to do so.
Thank you. We'll go to any questions or comments by the commissioners. Mr. Kuzno.
Are the garbage cans really five feet by five feet, and there's two of them? That sounds huge.
Well, are you going to ask the applicant?
I'm asking, I'm asking.
Okay, Mr. Lippens?
Mr. Lippens? I'm asking.
Okay.
Anybody.
Perhaps Mr. Lippens can. My only point was that if you have a question for the applicant, I'll ask that she come to the podium.
Yeah, I mean, it says five feet by five here on here, but it just seems.
Ms. Bukhari?
That's kind of a moot point.
Would you like to step up and answer that question?
That is just an allocated space.
Okay, so they're not actual cans that are instead of that big?
Yeah, allocated space.
It would be unwieldy, I would imagine. Then I, I think the 10 by 18 space is plenty sufficient for what they're doing here. Is there a variance required to do something less than 10 by 20? Is that what I'm hearing from you, Paul? Or not?
I wish that I could say that I think we have discretion on it. But if there, if there's room to do 10 by 20, I think that that would be the letter of the ordinance. I agree that a 10 by 18 would be sufficient for this type of parking, but, you know, really, you could do this without really providing more pavement. You could extend the middle line two feet and get it, basically because you've got the width on the driveway here to do it, so.
Oh, I see what you mean.
And there is enough space on the backside, so there is no problem in making it 10 20.
Okay.
And also pavement will be no problem.
And the paving is only in the parking spaces, is that right? Are we requiring it in the driveway as well? Paul?
I, I think that you could pave the pad and meet the letter of the law, although I think it would be, it would be better if you paved the driveway. But at the minimum, we want to see those spaces paved.
Yes, that is not a problem.
But I guess you could let us know what you prefer to do, so Planning Commission knows, and then I'll make sure it's reflected on the plan.
Yeah, I will do the cemented one.
I'm sorry, can you speak right?
I can do the cement one, if that is a preferred one, you know, 10 by 20 each car parking. So that's what the plan is.
And you intend to do the driveway also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so then one other comment, Paul, you said we're going to cover ourselves by saying, don't direct water toward the right of way. I think that's where the water's probably supposed to go, is toward the right of way. I can't, absent any topography on this plan, I'm assuming Margaret Street does not have curb and gutter, is this true or not? I don't know.
I couldn't answer. Mr. Lippens, possibly?
I don't believe that it does, but I can actually look at the aerial.
And probably should have a ditch or something, but most of the time, water is directed toward the right of way. It's either going to be a ditch, a roadside ditch, or a curb and gutter out there.
Is it, I'm sorry, is that in, in the write-up? Mr. Kuzno?
Yeah, Paul had mentioned that. That's one of his conditions, actually, of approval, that we include that.
Okay.
I think, I think what we're dealing with is the transition from a single-family use to a multifamily use. And even though we're talking about a duplex, you know, if we were talking about an apartment complex, we'd be requiring detention and doing stormwater analysis. So while we're talking about a minimal amount of stormwater, and I agree with you, most single-family uses do drain towards the right of way.
Yeah.
And if it's, there's a ditch, that's the intent. But the purpose of the note is, you know, basically to show that the applicant is required to process their own stormwater. If there's a problem, we would have the recourse to talk them about it.
Okay, well, but they could be in violation the second that we approve it, and they don't do anything to their topography either, you know? They said, if there's a problem, I get it, but.
Right, so if there's, if they paved the driveway and immediately we start getting flooding in the street on Margaret Street at the end of their driveway, we have some recourse to make them process that.
Okay.
Ms. Chick?
I was by there today, and there is no curb or ditch there, so it's right there at the street, just like everybody else's home. And I did want to say, and this is more of a comment than a question, that the updates that you've done to the home so far, it looks really nice, so good job.
Thank you.
I have one question for you. In the, in the one report, it says that you indicated that the well on the site is abandoned. Can you tell us about the well? Is it in usable condition? What's going to happen?
It is in usable condition, and there is a reverse osmosis, you know, equipment was placed last time by the previous owner, but it is in a usable condition.
So it is functional?
Yes.
Okay, because the, the report indicates that, you indicated that the well on the site is abandoned. So it's, that's incorrect.
Yeah, that is incorrect. It is in, functional.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other commissioners have a question for the applicant? Thank you, you can have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, I have a couple comments. Mr. Lippens, on the, on the write-up for the conditional use, number one, is all variances required by the zoning, zoning board of appeals are granted. Those were granted, correct?
Yes, they were. At the November 18th zoning board of appeals meeting, and you have the recommendations in your packet.
Right, and, and I saw that. Do you still feel it's necessary to have that on there? Really isn't, but.
I don't, I guess your point is well taken. I don't think it needs to be on there, but usually, we note that variances are required as part of our reviews, whether, you know, typically, you know, a lot of times this happens all in the same month, so we want to make sure we're tracking what's required in, in every review letter.
Okay.
But yes, technically, this should say that variances were granted on November 18th.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the recommendation on the site plan, I do have some comments. Number one, on item number one, the applicant must provide parking spaces. Can we define it as two parking spaces that are a minimum of 200 square feet? Those are, those would be 10 by 20. So I think we should say two spaces, if we could have that addition on there.
Makes sense.
Of course, as, as just in your previous comment, all variances required must be obtained, which so far they have been prior to zoning compliance, issuance of a zoning compliance, which is at the end of the process before, in this case, the owner could occupy by renting out or so, or so forth, so that's not a big deal. We just discussed about the site drainage. I don't see it as being a large issue. Also, well, perhaps we can also add in number one, since the applicant did confirm that they are able to provide concrete, can we, can we have that added on there? I think we should add that. The applicant confirmed that that's their intent. Right. So I'd like to say the applicant must provide two spaces that are a minimum of 200 square feet.
Right.
Yeah, we'll say, we'll say paved and, square feet and driveway paved. Does that, does that suffice, Mr. Lippens?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Okay. Yeah, please step up to the microphone.
So I will do the cemented area for the car parking space, you know?
Okay.
Where the cars, but driveway doesn't have to be the cemented one. The driveway.
It can be asphalt.
Asphalt, so yes.
Correct, Mr. Lippens?
It can be gravel, he said.
I think we've accepted gravel before with a paved pad for where the cars are parked.
Okay, well, we'll leave that up to a discussion between you and the planning consultant.
Okay, okay.
So, Mr. Lippens, I, I just made the point that the applicant was, was not opposed to paving the driveway, so.
Yeah, and I think when you asked that question, the applicant said they would pave the driveway, but maybe there's some confusion over what that means.
Yes, I, I meant cars, you know? Car parking spaces.
So I think that's clear now, yeah.
So she didn't really understood the whole thing. So the driveway would be preferably.
Just the gravel.
The gravel one, and the parking pad would be concrete, as you said it would be. So we would do the concrete for the pad, and driveway would be, it will give a better appearance to the house as well, if it is the gravel.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I think it's, it's cleared up. I think I understand the intent now. And I do think there was maybe some miscommunication the first time.
Okay, so the intent of the applicant is to leave the driveway gravel and pave the parking area, correct?
With concrete.
Okay, so on number one, then, we will just add in concrete. That would suffice for our purposes tonight, correct, Mr. Lippens?
And I thought you said provide two parking spaces.
Correct. Add, so the applicant must provide parking, two spaces that are a minimum of 200 square feet in concrete. Good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the only other thing I saw, there's the last, on the site plan drawing of the home, the location of the well was not on there. So it was on the, it was on previous.
On the sketch.
Site plans for the conditional use and maybe for the ZBA. But the, the drawing, I believe that was attached for the site plan, it didn't show the well, so I'll put number five, location of the well be shown.
That's the gravel.
Yeah, but that's, that wasn't in the, that, that, that drawing is not the one attached to the site plan. Am I correct? Which one is that attached to?
You are correct.
Okay.
That was a sketch plan submitted with zoning plans.
Okay, I'll say location of well, be provided on plans with dimension. On site plan. And the other, the other items I have is, apparently, we, we often don't have a single home being transitioned to a duplex. And I had inquired with Ms. Bird today regarding the township's process for that. Apparently, there is an application that goes to the fire department so that they can designate addresses. There is a fee for that. And any requirement for that, which Ms. Bird inquired with the fire chief, that an address would have to be, you know, visible from the street, both addresses. So I would like to add a, a condition on there that it would be, it would be six, provide two separate addresses, fees and application at the township. Question for the applicant, you can just say yes or no. Are you currently, do you have any building permits, plumbing, heating, mechanical permits yet for the, for the structure? Have you done work on the structure?
I, I have one decking permit, active decking permit, and one mechanical, the previous, previous owner, he pulled out that permit for mechanical, for the furnace.
Have you done any other work in the unit?
Just the, just the, you know, painting and little bit, you know, painting.
Okay. Okay. And you said there's a deck being built? There's a deck being built?
Not yet, not yet.
That's in the future?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we don't want to, we don't want to take care of that, no. Thank you.
Just the repair of the deck.
There is an existing deck.
There is an existing deck there. So, there is a repair on the deck.
Is that the front?
Yes, front.
Okay, thank you. The front porch. I wanted to clarify that. And the other, so, number seven would be that the applicant addressed these conditions through the planning consultant for administrative approval. I think that would suffice. Are you good with that?
Yep.
Ms. Limbaugh, is that, did you get all that, or would you like them to go over it again? Okay, number one is the only other one, the existing number one on the site plan. The applicant must provide parking, actually, two parking spaces. It should be the number two between provide parking. And at the end of that sentence, it'll be 200 square feet in concrete, period. So, five was the, the well location on the site plan. Number six was the separate addresses with the fee and application at the township. Number seven being administrative approval on the site plan. Very good. Thank you. Okay, any other commissioners? No? Okay. In that case, I will make motion to, we'll do them separately, I think. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the request of 43 Margaret Street for a conditional use to develop existing structure on the parcel as the duplex.
Support.
Support by Mr. Zarzaki. Any questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Ms. Afante?
Yes.
Five approved.
Thank you. And I would make the motion to approve with conditions the request of 43 Margaret Street for a site plan approval, as is indicated in the report from the candidate December 10th, 2019, with the noted additions that we discussed.
Support.
Support by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments? Oh, okay. You turn that off, please. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Excuse me. Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Ms. Afante?
Yes.
Five, zero, approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will move on to item C, recommend to approve the 2019 annual report of activities by the planning commission. Mr. Lippens?
Yep, we got to that time of year again, when we start talking about the next year's work program, and also make a report of our annual activities to the board. So, we prepared this for you to review. If you find it to be comprehensive, we could vote to send it to the board, but if we have things we want to add, changes we want to make, we can take comments in the discussion tonight, and then I can revise them for a January meeting, and we could approve it at a later time.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with this one. I don't have any issue with the report on the first, second, and the beginning of the third page. The proposed work plan, I suppose, is what I have. Some questions, comments about?
Yeah, and as you know, sometimes we carry over work that we suggested in the last work plan, and this is kind of intended to be an ongoing work program for planning activities, and we have got a lot done this year. A lot has happened, but there are some things we talked about last year that we haven't had the opportunity, and then we also have some ongoing projects, like the zoning ordinance. So, I would like, certainly like feedback.
I will give you some. Okay, number one. So, do we have to keep the update to master plan, because that's been finished? So, it'd be continue to work with planning commission to update the zoning ordinance, perhaps?
Oh, right, yeah, we should strike that. That should just say the zoning ordinance, yes.
Update the zone, yeah, update the zoning ordinance. Code enforcement, as much as we can, I agree that we support whatever code enforcement procedures or implementation. Now, again, this is of the master plan and zoning ordinance, and really, should it say the master plan? We don't, when you're saying code enforcement, I'm thinking like the code enforcement officer, so I'm thinking more of the zoning ordinance. Am I correct, Mr. Lippens?
Well, I think what it means is implementation of the master plan to the extent that there are goals that, of the master plan, that can be supported.
Okay, perhaps that could be worded differently, then?
Yeah, but I don't object to taking it out. I mean, you're right, we enforce the ordinance, not the master plan.
Right, so, implementation of the scratch master plan and it'd be the zoning ordinance. Ms. Chick?
I'm trying to understand exactly what it says. Efforts to formalize code enforcement procedures. Isn't our code enforcement procedures, wouldn't that come through the board as opposed to the planning commission? Isn't that, is that an ordinance? Will we create the ordinance for code enforcement, is my question, I guess? I don't think so.
Well, no, so, if it were, there are zoning issues that can be supported by code enforcement, but an ordinance, standalone procedural ordinance would go to the board. What this is about is, it's not just a work plan for planning commission, but for planning, the township planner, and you to kind of guide us in that work. We are called upon a lot to coordinate with the building department, the zoning administrator, and the code enforcement officer, as well as township manager. So, this is really in here for coordination of township activities as it relates to code enforcement.
Well, that's my question regarding the whole proposed 2019 work plan, is that some of this, I think that we were looking, I was looking for, of the work plan for the planning commission as opposed to, you know, this is kind of a very broad plan that encompasses a lot of board issues, too, so...
I agree, and I guess I agree with Ms. Chick, Mr. Lippens, that some of this, actually, this is a report from the planning commission to the board of trustees regarding our, what we've done in the past and what we intend to do in the future, and not so much as what you may have on the plate, I guess. And that's kind of like from number four through, actually, all of them. It's kind of reflective of that, although we can go through each one if you want, but I think maybe the work plan should be like Ms. Chick says, and what the actual planning commission will be looking to focus on for the coming year.
Well, so, the reason why it's organized to include planning activities is that the planning commission and, you know, the planning arm, we don't exist just to do the planning commission's work. You know, of course, you know this, but it's the board that sets the priorities, and there's these projects that are going on. They are planning projects, right? All the coordination for the North Village site development that I've been working on, that is going to come to the planning commission once, or if the board selects a developer. So, this, the implementation of development programs, you know, for instance, the parks and recreation master plan update, that might not be a planning commission activity per se, but it is a plan, and it is something that needs to be done, and the state encourages the planning commissions to adopt those plans, or to support those plans as well. So, you know, this is an opportunity for planning commission to communicate to the board your support for planning activities. It doesn't have to be solely things that we do at planning commission.
Okay, so, then I guess we ought to go through each one, because I understand what you're saying, but some of these are not in the scope of the planning commission that I feel has been directed to us by the board of trustees. So, with that, I mean, we can go through each one. Number four, the North Village site development, my comment is that what part does the planning commission take on seeking grants? We really don't. Although, if one was presented to us, of course, we could look at it and so forth, but this is, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not the point lead on obtaining grants, although that may be your scope as the planning consultant. I don't see it as the planning commission. And we don't work with the potential developers. That was something that we discussed earlier, that we would prefer to be removed from the development process, so that we don't have, so we can look at it objectively.
Right, and that's, so, just so I said, you know, the, what it says is, this is a following work plan for the township planner and planning commission.
Okay, but, okay, I guess what I'm misunderstanding then, is, so, this is the annual report that's required by the ordinance from the planning commission to the board of trustees, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we do not direct yourself, that your direction comes from, not from just the planning commission, but also administratively, the township supervisor, the township manager, the board of trustees. So...
Correct.
I'm not certain that all of these items have been written directives to the planning commission to partake. So, that's why, that's, I guess that's my, that's my point. I'd like to just narrow it to the, as a report from the planning commission to the board of trustees, and not have such a general sense, like Ms. Chick mentioned, where it includes possible, possible items that you, as the planning consultant, might entertain for the township as a whole. Ms. Chick?
Correct. To me, this is more of what the planner would be working with the planning commission and the board, but some of these things on this plan are things that the planning commission would not be working on without direction of the board. And number five in particular caught my eye, providing a payment in lieu of parking for developing township parking lots. This actually came up at the board level, and the board decided they weren't going to direct the planning commission to work on any of this until they got new, or information on exactly what it meant, and what it would, how to implement it, and the cost and all that, before they even directed it to the top, the planning commission to consider, so...
Just, I understand that. But just to revisit it, I mean, that, you know, these items were on the work program that you sent to the board last year, and these are carryover items that are still important.
I would venture to say not all of them, but...
Well, the parks and recreation master plan update, I think, is new, but the downtown parking study was on there last year. North Village site development was on there last year. And that's a plan, so looking at downtown parking, that is, that's a planning activity.
It is, but it wasn't directed specifically. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Chick. Was that a directive from the board of trustees for the planning commission to look at?
A downtown parking plan, I can see that as a commission thing to come up with, a plan for developing parking, but when we start getting into specifics about how to do that, I don't think that should be on there. So, we just want to even encourage shared parking, but no, the plant, the board has not in particular directed the planning commission to do a downtown parking study. I can see what would be part of our work, but we haven't been directed to do it.
Well, so, the purpose of this is for planning commission to discuss what's important, and then you forward this to the board, so that the board can discuss and direct planning commission and the planner to work on it, right? So, that's, I mean, we can remove the parking study, we can remove anything you want from this, if you don't think it's important for us to work on. But the purpose of this is to communicate to the board things that we might want to work on in the coming year, so that then, the board can authorize us to work on them.
I don't have any problem with the downtown parking study. I just don't want to see specific plans or options as part of the downtown parking study, as it's presented to the board, and let them direct us to do that work.
So, I think we could cut provisions for developing township parking lots. We could cut encouraging shared parking and providing payment in lieu of parking.
Yes.
Okay, so, that would be develop a parking plan for downtown that includes provisions. What, what, again?
Provisions for developing parking lots.
Okay.
Township parking.
So, yeah, so you have the idea there.
So, I guess, you know, I'm okay with the planner, because the planner should be presenting things to the board that we should be considering, and then having them look at this and say, oh, yeah, okay, let's work on that, and then as we get this directed to us, then we can look at all the options.
Again, the, okay, and that's for that one. Number six, assist as needed with evaluation of proposed equalization basin, provide assistance in developing fact sheets, presentations, and facilitating discussions. I'm sorry.
That sounds like a board.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to give Mr. Lippens his, you know, our input, so, I agree. There's already been, there's an ongoing discussion, or, and I don't know the end result of it from the board regarding the equalization basin.
So, it's possible that this should drop off. I know I wrote this last year, because it was while we were currently doing the master plan, and we were thinking that there could be a part of growth evaluation as part of the master plan adoption process, but if the board has handled this, and township, and the planning commission doesn't feel like there's work to us, for us to do in this regard, since we have adopted the master plan now, I certainly wouldn't oppose dropping this from the list if, yeah.
Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to make that kind of a decision yet. We're still doing a design study, and we haven't even gotten past a design study to figure out if we even want to go forward with it, so...
So, I would support cutting that, if that's the feedback from the commission.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, does the board have a similar document that they work off of for their goals for the coming year, where a lot of the stuff could be transferred over to them and not... to them and not be under our purview at this point in time? Because I agree with Larry that, it feels like, this feels like the planner's role in what's going on here, but not necessarily the Planning Commission. Our role is take direction from the board and review plans that come into us, site plans and that kind of stuff that's coming our way. We're not, we're not on committees where we're creating things out there besides master plan and zoning ordinances, right? So we're not really out there trying to develop downtown parking, so to speak, as a commission. We can review it, we can, we can have input, but we aren't, we aren't like out there bird dogging it.
Yeah, that's, I agree with your, with your take on it, Mr. Kuzinow. Ms. Infante?
I absolutely agree also. My problem with six, probably because I sit on the DDA, is that I thought that's really what eight is doing. In fact, listening to the DDA as they are creating committees to look at developing, for example, parking with the North Field, the North Village Park, it seems to me the DDA is doing a lot of this work in conjunction with the board, and this, this is sort of kitchen sink for, I think, a lot of activities that we would receive requests for input, or we would get documents after some of these decisions have been made or plans have been created, but for us to be responsible for, a lot of this is grant writing, and as someone who writes grants, I'm thought, wow, I didn't realize that this is a part of the PC's purview. So I just thought some of the financial work and a lot of the committee work didn't seem like the Planning Commission work, especially because I sit on the DDA and I hear about it a lot with them, because they are doing that.
Thank you. Actually, I think eight, nine, and 10 can be removed. We don't do a capital improvement plan, that's a board issue, and we don't secure MDNR grants. Although that may be a directive to you as a planning consultant.
I've got no objections to removing eight, nine, and 10 if that's...
Okay, and, okay, so then we go to seven, so we have, and Mr. Iquenow's not here, we have a Parks and Recreation Committee, so I would think that, Ms. Chick?
The Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Master Plan was actually created by the Parks and Rec, the Planning Commission had nothing to do with it, we really didn't even, I don't think it even came before us at any point. It went right from the Planning Commi, I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec to the board for approval.
So it's already been approved?
Well, no, this, it needs to be updated, but when they did it last time, that was the process, it never came to the Planning Commission.
It should come to the Planning Commission.
And I agree with you, Mr. Lippens, and here's what, a lot, on a lot of these topics that we're discussing, and a lot of topics that we've already dealt with in the past several years, there's all these subcommittees, they should be coming to the Planning, in my view, and this is just my opinion, these subcommittees ought to be presenting their findings and, and thoughts to the Planning Commission, so that we can review them, and then we're the ones that should, that should forward these things to the Board of Trustees, and absolutely, that is not what is happening in the past several years, I guarantee you that. Certain things, yes, most things, no. And if you really look at the bylaws of the Planning Commission, it is our, it is our job to do many of these things. It's a, we can do it as a subcommittee from ourselves, we can assign others to do those kinds of subcommittee work, and what we have is the board, on its discretion, assigning subcommittee duties, and none of them are coming back through the Planning Commission. So, really, I, I would hope that possibly you, in your capacity, could inform the administration and the Board of Trustees as to, I mean, somebody really needs to look at the bylaws and see the function of these groups, and how they should coordinate, and how they should communicate, because we have a disconnect, in my opinion.
Maybe that's something to add to the work plan, we could look at the bylaws.
Well, there's, there's certainly a lot of things we could work on, but my point is, is that, and again, as with some of the hot topics that we've had in the past two years, I'm not, I'm not going to allow the Planning Commission to just jump in on a topic and discuss it for months on end, forward it to the Board of Trustees, and have a, just a mess. I want more, I want more directive from the Board of Trustees directly to the Planning Commission as to what they're after, and let us provide any help that we see necessary to guide the township or guide the Board of Trustees to achieve that goal. So we're, we're not the plan setters, they are, but certainly, we're here to serve and to provide any assistance we can to make, to do studies, to do recommendations, to look at it in depth, obviously, because they have so many topics, they can't do it, but yet again, that capacity's not being utilized by this Planning Commission. So that's my opinion. Ms. Chick?
And I just want to remind the Planning Commission, there was a motion passed at the board level that nothing comes before the Planning Commission that hasn't been directed from the board as a whole, voted on as a motion, and then sent to the Planning Commission to move on. And I just had a comment, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, that was actually the first year that they had done it, and they probably didn't have a process, they just did it and put it through, yeah.
So, so, and I don't know if any, I'll let other commissioners speak, but my opinion for tonight on this proposal, Mr. Lippens, I'm good with one through three, and possibly, then the modification of five, and the rest of them, I'm not, I'm not really keen on, but having this discussion tonight, perhaps you can take away some, some further changes that you may want to make to this document.
I would recommend that we keep four and seven on here, because I do think that they are things that we will wind up working on over the course of this year, or should work on. Four being the North Village site development, even if that's through an application, but I anticipate that being something that will certainly, and should certainly, continue to involve Planning Commission, and I have been updating Planning Commission the entire year on our progress with that work.
If, if that's your intent, I need, I'd strongly suggest you alter your writing, your write-up of four and seven.
I'm good with that.
So if you, I'll let, I would be willing to entertain it, but not in its current language.
All right. I can rework that, yeah.
How's that? Okay, thank you. Ms. Chick?
I would be okay with number four, is I don't, I don't, I don't think we should have anything to do with the grants, and we shouldn't be talking about acquiring additional lake frontage, that is a board issue, and DNR grants, again, is not something that we, we, that's not our wheelhouse.
Right.
And I would like to definitely second that, because there's a lot of education that goes into the policy you need to know to even begin to write those grants, and I don't think that's within our purview.
I, I write grants for park funding, so that's why it's in there, is because oftentimes planners write grants.
Planner, for sure.
Yeah.
So, does that help, Mr. Lippens?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, if you want to provide us with another draft on the proposed work plan, and it would be proposed, I think you want to say 2020, not 2019?
Indeed, as 2020 begins, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, and I was kind of looking like the one that we had for 2019, actually, where you had it all into, not a graph, but categories.
Yeah.
Yeah, I liked that, in my opinion.
Ms. Infante?
I might be missing something, but on the other items, speaking of the categories, should the update of master plan as completed be on there somewhere? Maybe not, maybe I'm...
No, I think you're right, that's a good thing to add.
Because that's where I was getting confused about...
It's kind of like a, so big that we forgot to put it on there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we can see another document on that. We'll go to the calendar of 2020, and looking at it, and I asked Mary to provide that last time, I think, well, we should have looked at it last, at last meeting, but the only different, only difference would be because of holidays, January would be the second and fourth week meetings instead of the first and third, but other than that, I did not see any conflicts, did any other commissioners?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Kuzinow?
Are we missing the whole marijuana issue on this thing, too, for 2019?
I think it was covered under zoning, but I could call it out, it was a huge time...
It was pretty much occupying 95% of our time.
It was, yeah. I'll call that out under the zoning ordinance specifically.
So, on the, on the calendar, everyone, everyone good with the dates? Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the proposed 2020 calendar. Support? Supported by Ms. Infante. Okay, any questions, comments on that? I think we can just do a voice vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December 4th in dispense with reading. Supported by Ms. Chick, any questions, comments, or corrections on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Final call to the public. I always look to make sure that you don't raise your hand.
Jim Nelson, 7777 Sutton. I'd like to thank Mr. Roman for sticking up for the role of the Planning Commission. It's fairly obvious that the credibility of the Planning Commission is, people are trying to borrow your credibility to buttress some fairly poorly planned actions by the Board of Trustees, and the current planning for the park is a disaster, it's literally theft from the taxpayers. And all you have to do is look at the little park, it was, the open space was nestled into the, the shades of the exit ramp in one of the proposals, and the teeny tiny allotments of land that had been squeezed out for the poor people of this township who have paid for that land. And what you said about the, I don't even know how to describe, you described it better. You've got a bunch of subcommittees, they're extremely poorly coordinated, if at all, they say they're, say, and they get ignored, and, and this is what's planning for, this is what's passing for planning, for that precious resource, that last 23 acres of land, something that could be something, and is just to be sold off to, probably next January 7th, I think, is the, is the kind of deadline of desperation for our supervisor. She wants to get something going and is in a hurry. So I, I feel for the taxpayers, I feel for the citizens of this township who are depending on the good offices, but they're not, they're not getting the best. Park planning is, is just terrible, it's not a park. I mean, when you look at that five acres that they're talking about parcelling out and remove the strip of land occupied by the, by the easement of a road that passes directly through the middle of it, there's not much there. Anyway, to that end, I'm going to publish a bunch of photographs I took during the inauguration of the park when Howard Fink was still manager, and it gives you a pretty good idea of how much space was actually required for that little celebration, and I hope that changes some minds. Thank you.
Comments from commissioners, we'll begin with Mr. Kuzinow.
Merry Christmas to all, thank you.
Ms. Chick?
Ditto, happy holidays, everybody, be safe.
Mr. Zarzaki?
Support Mr. Kuzinow's Merry Christmas and add a Happy New Year.
Ms. Infante?
Support and stay warm.
Thank you. I'd like to announce the next regular meeting, January 8th, tentatively, and make the motion to adjourn. Supported by Ms. Chick, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.